Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 17, 2021, meeting of the Chapala Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing contracts, negotiations, potential litigation, the employment history of particular persons, matters of health and safety, and to receive advice with counsel. May I have a motion and a second to reconvene a public session? All these seconds, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Holly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Great, thank you, everyone. So I'd like to start with the president's report with updating everyone on where we are with the school district board of education response and written comments to the town of Newcastle's proposed Form Based Code. So we sent our written comments to the town yesterday morning, and then we also posted our letter to the town on the website, and we sent an email to the community with the letter attached. So I just want to go through a very quick summary of what we're asking the town to do, you know, very quick background for those of you who are not quite fully informed about this and the recommendations that we gave to the town. So I just want to start off by again underscoring and highlighting the fact that we welcome and we are deeply committed to educating all students who reside in our community now and in the future, and that our responsibility is to ensure that all of our students have access to the best education possible. We value diversity here. We champion equity and inclusion without exception. We have said this many times. We have engaged in a lot of equity work here, and so I don't think that we can emphasize that enough. We support the town board in their efforts to revitalize the Chapala Hamlet and in their work to provide affordable and varied housing options for community members. So one of the issues that we've discussed and that's very important to us is regarding student enrollment. Obviously, we're a school district, and student enrollment is very important in our plans, ability to plan, in our facilities, and our budgeting. So there are several factors that present challenges to making reliable projections. We have the fact that the majority of families who move here move because of our school district, and that makes it extremely challenging to identify an accurate housing multiplier of those kinds that are conventionally used that can likely predict the impact that new developments would have on our enrollment. Also, the COVID-19 health pandemic has destabilized real estate patterns. Real estate sales in Chapala have dramatically increased over the past year. Another factor is the size of residential units and the number of bedrooms that we would get under the Form Based Code. These are key drivers of school enrollment increases. The town board has said that they want to control the number of bedrooms in the units and to limit them. We're concerned that there may be legal and practical uncertainties in the town board's ability to impose these kinds of granular limitations, including challenges under the Federal Housing Act and the New York State Human Rights Law. And having restrictions that make it impossible for a developer to propose an economically viable project could lead to requests for variances or even litigation. A second area of concern is the impact to single-family property taxes. So our property taxes account for almost 90% of our revenue. So the developers or landlords of the proposed units modeling the Form Based Code would be taxed at a different lower assessment rate or different assessed value than single-family homes. There is a concern that the code would disproportionately impact owners of single-family homes. So we would like them to conduct an analysis, which I'll talk about below. The school district also includes residents of the town of Mount Pleasant. Their taxes would also be affected, and they're not represented by the town of Newcastle. So our school district, as an interested agency, has a fiduciary obligation to represent them in this process. So also with regard to our dependence on property taxes for revenue, we'd like to highlight that our ability to increase taxes to meet growing expenses is limited by the tax cap legislation. This limits the tax levy to the lesser of 2% or the rate of inflation, and overrides of the tax cap require a supermajority vote of the public, and these have been mostly unsuccessful in our region. And it's also not our desire to raise taxes unduly on our residents. We would also highlight the areas of safety and security on our middle school and traffic patterns and the construction impacts related to Bell Middle School. We also highlight the timeline of the development of the Form Based Code. After the last public hearing, the town board voted to apply the Form Based Code legislation to North Really Avenue, and it also voted to complete the CEQA analysis and FGEIS for the entire 72-acre Chapala Hamlet study area. We're concerned that once the CEQA analysis is complete, this or any future town board with a simple majority vote would have the authority to apply the entire Form Based Code to the whole 72-acre area without further public input for the purposes of analysis and hard look at environmental impacts. This is particularly concerning in light of the socioeconomic changes that may emerge from the effects of the COVID-19 health pandemic. This problem can be solved by limiting the FGEIS to the North Really Avenue area now being considered for Form Based Code legislation. There are also elements outside of the town board's control. We're concerned about tax abatements such as pilots, these are payments in lieu of taxes, and these are grants that are within the control of Westchester County and Westchester Industrial Development Agencies, our IDAs. The town board, and certainly the CCSD, may have very little influence in these processes, which could have an impact on the school district's tax base and taxpayers. So based on these considerations, we requested that the town board act on several recommendations and requests for additional study and analysis. We asked them to limit the remainder of the CEQA process, including the FGEIS, to North Really Avenue, and subject the future expansion of the code to the CEQA review process at a future time when socioeconomic impacts of the COVID health pandemics are more clearly known. We've asked them to engage in a granular or more local analysis of potential student enrollment with consideration of real estate sales in the school district jurisdiction based on recent data, to provide legal analysis supported by an attorney opinion letter of the town board's ability to limit the size of residential units and their number of bedrooms, including an assessment of challenges under the Federal Casing Act and New York State Human Rights Law, and the likelihood of developer requests for variances and other legal challenges. We've asked for a reduced density analysis, requirements of site-specific CEQA review in the Form Based Code, and a mechanism in the code to regulate the pace of development. We've asked them to conduct a property tax analysis, including specific impacts to single-family homes, the senior citizens on fixed income, and residents without children attending public schools. This analysis should include all residents of the school district, including those residing in the town's Mount Pleasant. We've asked them to analyze safety and security impacts of added developments and construction on Bell Middle School and the traffic impacts on Bell Middle Schools, including impacts during construction and development, and to also include an analysis of traffic impacts of potential redistricting due to increased enrollment at Douglas T. Rafflin Elementary School and Robert E. Bell Middle School. We've asked them to analyze the financial impacts of potential pilots or other tax abatements that may be granted by Westchester County IDAs or other agencies outside of the town board's control, to provide a legal analysis supported by an attorney memorandum on the validity and effectiveness of Form Based Code language limiting pilots and other tax abatements, and analyzing alternative methods, zoning or otherwise, with more effective local control to revitalize the commercial area and provide affordable housing. This, I think, is a comprehensive summary, but it's not everything we have in the letter, so I would encourage anyone who's interested to go on our website and read our comment letter. So finally, you know, we'd like to close by restating our commitment to the education of all students who reside in our school district, current and future, and we appreciate and would like to join the town in its efforts to revitalize the hamlet and increase socioeconomic diversity. Our goals are to best serve our students and our entire community. That is my entire summary of the letter. I'd like to give an opportunity to anyone on the board, if you'd like to make any comments, please feel free.
I'd like to say, just to reiterate what you said, Vicky, and thank you for saying that so well, I won't go over all of that, but I really do think it's important, and I think the community does understand that how much we want to work with the town to revitalize the downtown area and to diversify our community, and those are goals that we all share. What this whole process is and what this letter is in terms of our comments and our requests, it's what we're supposed to be doing in terms of sort of creating a long list of all these things. When we do that, that could impact the school district, and to make sure that we cover all our bases so that this growth is done responsibly and so that the burden is shared across the community so that we can educate all of our students, the new students, the ones who are here, so that the tax burden does not fall, you know, unequally on existing community residents. And so all of the asks and all of the information in there, it's just to say, this is everything that needs to be considered and looked into to make sure that all of this is done in a fiscally responsible way, in an inclusivity, you know, with an inclusivity mindset, and to make sure that it's done in a way that the whole town embraces this, which I think the town does, everyone does, wish to revitalize our downtown hamlet. But our responsibility as school board members is to make sure that anything that's done will not overburden the school district and will allow us to continue to provide to every student here the level of education that we do. So I just hope that people, and I think sometimes people can look at that and say, well, you're listing all these things that need to be looked into, but that's what the CEQA process sort of wants us to do. That's our job, is to do that and make sure that all our bases are covered. So, you know, I know it's a lot, there are a lot of complexities here, but I just think it's an important thing to note that we're doing our job by just making sure that we look into all this.
It's not our job, it's the town board's job to do this.
I just mean our job in terms of the effects on the school district.
Right, right. We have to make sure that the town board is doing, is looking into the detail that we need to be looking into. As you said, we educate everyone in this community and we continue doing that, but to be able to provide the enhanced education that we give at the cost that we can, that's the other problem, that's the other issue, you know, it's a problem. One thing, and I made this statement earlier in the evening, of joining the town board, our district, unlike other districts, we don't have a pay-to-play option. If you come to our district, it doesn't matter if you live in a $10 million home or a $1,000 apartment, you get educated the same way, you have the same ranks, you have the same opportunities, you do everything in our district. Some districts, if you want to play football, you pay extra. You want to be in the orchestra, you pay extra. We don't do that. We educate everyone equally here, and we want to continue doing that. And that's one thing I love about Chapala, or our district, that everyone is considered equal in our schools. You're given the opportunity to learn and to excel, and it's not based on a dollar. So, wait, 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 Jane, thank you, because I think, you know, we have to do this because this is our responsibility. Our responsibility is to ensure that we're representing our constituents, the members of our school district community, as well as the town, with the town's responsibility to basically do the detailed work and do a thoughtful and detailed analysis so the town understands what, the community understands what's going on, and we understand what's going on.
And Jane, I agree with everything Jane said, and just to sort of piggyback on that, that part of this is the timing of it, right? That we have such an involved analysis and list of requests in terms of further analysis because the way that the process works is this time period is our opportunity to ask those questions and raise those potential issues for further analysis. Not that we're expecting answers one way or the other, but that these are questions that we think need to be raised and looked into as part of the CEQA review process leading to then the GEIS as opposed to the DGEIS, and that it's not, it's not something where we're going to get an answer and then be able to be like, oh, we didn't really, we should have also asked you this, so can you now go back and look at it? But this is our opportunity to ask all of the things we think we might need to ask as part of this process, and so we're asking everything we can think of that we might need to ask as part of this process, in case this is our one opportunity to ask those questions about this as presented. So to the extent that maybe you look at this and say, why so many questions? Surely you can get some answers and go back later and ask other questions that may or may not be true, and that's why, to make sure we're fulfilling our fiduciary responsibility as a school district, we wanted to make sure to raise pretty much every issue we could potentially think of at this point to make sure that they're part of the town's analysis moving forward.
I just wanted to thank Jane and Vicky from Communications Committee for doing such a thorough letter expressing our comments, and I feel like we've done a very detailed job of articulating all of the potential impacts that we would like the town to look into, what the town does need to look into in order to understand the impacts of a new code in the town and the hamlet. So I just wanted to thank you all and thank the community for being so patient and forthcoming with their thoughts as well.
Well, thank you, Ali. I mean, Jane and I did get authority from the board's Communications Committee to draw the letter, but I do want to thank the board for your input as well into the letter, and, you know, it's a letter from all of us, so we're all, you know, unanimous in the letter.
Yes, but you guys did the heavy lifting.
Yeah, you're welcome. You know, we've all taken a lot of time to work on this and to look at this issue and to take it seriously. You know, schools have, ever since I can remember, have always fought very hard for funding, and, you know, we're going to talk about the state budget in a little bit, but we're always stuck with getting less money, and certain school districts even more so, they're very, very underfunded, there's so much inequity in the system, and we're always battling with whether it's new mandates or new complex ways that the state education is found to underfund school districts. And so, you know, through my work with Westqua, I've seen how districts have so much trouble, for instance, with tax abatements and pilots, and other districts have had very serious problems with school district funds because of that. So, you know, there's a lot out there that we haven't had to contend with, that, you know, we should take a look at, that will affect our students, you know, whether they're students now or any student that should come into the school district. So we're also trying to protect future students who are, who will be coming in from any kind of housing that we have. We want to be able to educate everyone here, all of the children of the school district adequately. So it's a constant, constant battle for more funding and better funding, even though, you know, Chapala has a pretty, we have a better situation than a lot of school districts, but all school districts struggle for funds.
May I, yeah, I just need to have an understanding, at the last meeting we talked about wanting to have a better understanding of mailing this out to the community, it would cost about $3,000, so can you let me know if I'd like us to do that?
Okay. I don't know. I do think, on the one hand, we have, over 50% of our residents don't have kids in schools, and we represent all of them. And all parents get our emails, but for everyone else, it's an opt-in system, right? So they have to sign up, so not all of our community gets our emails. So I'm really a little bit torn by this. We know, we did send a mailing already, so people are aware of the process, and they should know, they're interested to go on to the town's website, the town is publishing all of the written comments. We're not the only interested agency, there are a lot of other interested agencies that publish comments to this. I have to say right now, I'm not sure how I feel about that. I didn't know what the cost would be, because this is more than a one-page, right?
Yeah, it's approximately $3,000 to send out the full letter.
The full, right, okay. Does anyone have any thoughts?
So I'm not sure that we need to send the final comments out in the letter. I think we've made everyone aware that this process is ongoing, and anyone who wanted to engage in the process knew how and had the opportunity. I'm not sure that there's any added value in mailing out another letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been mixed, and I've been curious, because obviously we want to be very fiscally responsible, and we spent a lot of money for a lot of really valuable things this year in terms of the pandemic, and we want to make sure that our money's being spent wisely, and I, but I also do want to make sure that the community is aware of what's happening. I think I would probably land on the side, maybe not doing the mailing, only in the sense that we're not, it won't affect anyone, we're not asking them to take action, not sending it will not hurt anybody, harm anybody in any way, in the sense that, you know, they will miss out on taking some action that they really need to take. This is more information. We obviously send out mailers in terms of budget votes or things like that, where the community member needs to know, the community members need to know that they need to take some action. We are also not taking action now, this is really just our opinion, so as much as I want to disseminate that information, I think I probably would land on the side that I would hope, given our board meetings and the opt-in system, that maybe the dollars might be better spent elsewhere in terms of just an informative letter there where it's easily accessed on our website.
I believe we have to send this out to the community. We spent $50,000 plus to get this analysis by our consultants. We've done a lot of work, the five of us, as well as administration, as well as other people who the administration's worked with. The community should know what we put together, what are final, we're not going to give you another one of these, I don't believe, this is it. Let's give them the information that we put together, show them our analysis, and what we're asking for. We have no idea how long the town board will keep the comments up on their website. We can keep ours up as long as we want on our website, and I think it's, you know, to the, perfectly honest, an open and frank discussion with our community and clear communication, we can go with this letter, it's communicated. $3,000 is a lot of money, but it's not that much in the scope of things, considering how much we've been forced to spend so far.
So rather than having an opinion, I'm going to ask you questions. The first is, could we potentially send a cheaper mailing saying we have submitted a final comment, which is available on our website? I mean, no, no, I'm asking seriously, because I think more in time that we should communicate to the community as a whole that we have presented this comment, but I wonder if, given the life of the comment, we have to actually mail the comment as opposed to our comment is final and presented and available here? And I guess that sort of leads to my second question, which is, knowing that there is a, at least half our community is not, does not have kids in the schools currently, and that we need, you know, obviously there are mandatory things where we need to reach and mail, such as budget, but that there may be other times when we do want to reach the community as a whole as opposed to just the community of parents in our schools. Is there a way to get email contact information for, like, is this something that we can undertake to do so that we have a, because from both a financial and an environmental perspective, I would prefer to not do paper unless absolutely necessary, but I don't know if that's something that's even feasible to do, and there certainly doesn't need to be an answer tonight, but I wanted to throw out the question in light of this conversation.
Yeah, I've been, I've had mixed feelings about this. I started out thinking we really should, and hearing the cost, maybe reconsider. Also, the fact is that this is a town board process, you know, this is not our process, and we've been asked, or we have the right legally to comment within the CEQA process by statute. So we've done our duty by our taxpayers, by our community, and we participate in the I really don't know that there's anything else that we need to do.
I believe we're tactically, we should see what we've worked on and see what we've done with the money that we've spent.
Yeah.
We spent a lot of money to get this consultant and these attorneys who worked with the consultants to give us the data that we could ask these questions for. I think the town deserves to see the questions we're asking of it. The community deserves to see the questions we're asking of the town board.
Well, it was important for us to do the consultant work because when everybody saw that, you know, we had 1,000 new residences proposed, and it doesn't matter that they were condos, rentals, it could have been 1,000 single-family homes, we would have, you know, asked the same questions. And the projection was 96 students, with no indication that anyone was going to do any further analysis. In fact, the town didn't even assure us that they would leave the comment period open for us to answer. At the end of the day, they left it open for a very long time, but to remember at the beginning, they were not very forthcoming in doing that, so I just want to take a step back and remember why we did that. But now that we've done, we've done the work, we've put it out, we sent a mailer, people are aware of this now, so I'm just, I'm just wondering whether, you know, we're really done with what we have to do.
Are they aware of it? Are they aware that we sent out this letter? I don't know.
Well, we sent out, we sent out a mailer letting people know about the issues we were concerned about and that this process was going on. So they're aware of the process, which means that the process, you know, has an end point, and if they were interested, then they would have gone to the town website to see, you know, what the progress is, and this is a town project.
We don't know how long our comments will be up on the town website. We don't know if they'll shut them down 26th of March.
We could keep them on our website.
I just want to interject, we're spending a lot of time talking about the town, and I think it's important, but we have a lot of work to do. So if it makes, if it makes sense, let me find out how much it would cost to send out a postcard so you can look at the difference between the two, because I don't think sending out a town letter will hurt us, right? I don't think it'll hurt us in terms of communicating that out. I think sending a postcard out, learning people that it's on the website, isn't going to be a problem for the district, I think it's an extra layer of communication. What I do think is an issue is if we continue to talk about our communication around this issue and it continues to take up time for the district when we have other matters that we need to address.
I totally agree.
Right?
Yeah. I'd like to have some closure here, that is what I would like to do, so that we're, I think we need to have closure around this, so we need to be done.
Maybe what we can do is commit to sending out something. Let me do the price points on postcard versus sending the full letter, and I'll send it to, I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, Kristen, thank you. That sounds helpful. Yes, that sounds good. Okay. All right. Okay, hang on, I'm going to get to the next item on the president's report, and it is about funding of public education and the problems that are faced by school districts. So we have a resolution here, and the resolution... districts. So we have a resolution here and the resolution comes from the Westchester Button School Boards Association. And they, I believe this, this work was done in conjunction with the Lower Hudson Education Coalition as well. And I think it's a very comprehensive resolution regarding the governor's proposed state education funding for, for next year. And so I know that you've had, we've all had the opportunity to people look at it, but I can go through it very quickly and, you know, if you have questions, I can do my best to answer them. But just so that everyone knows what, what this is asking for. It starts off by acknowledging that COVID-19 has created exceptional short-term costs for school districts, such as, you know, of course, all of equipment, cleaning supplies, contact tracing and, you know, technology that's been required. And recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic will have created a great amount of student need that will require long-term funding, especially in the area of mental health, learning loss and digital equity. There are federal funds that are intended to aid schools in managing the pandemic costs in the CARES Act, and those were used to fully supplant state aid funds for the 2020, 21 school year. The executive budget proposes to use Federal Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, that's a long one, CRRSA. The executive budget proposes to use those funds that are intended for pandemic expenses to replace 1.35 billion in state aid for the 2021, 22 school year. Also, the executive budget proposes to fully use our district's CRRSA allocation instead of state aid for the 2021 school year. Sorry, that was redundant. Also, this, um, this year's proposed budget, the governor has proposed to, this, this is not what the resolution says, but I want to explain it. He has proposed to use STAR reimbursement, STAR, there are different kinds of STAR programs. He's proposed to use the STAR exemption reimbursement payments in the school aid runs to count as school, school aid. That has never been used as counting for school aid before. And so the, first of all, this is an artificial inflation of the state aid amount. And then to add to this problem, he's also proposing to reduce the amount of refund that school districts are owed by 1.3 billion dollars. And he's proposing this as an annually recurring cut. So this is going to cause the expense, cause the expense of STAR to fall on schools and right back onto the taxpayers, which is supposed to help. So, you know, this, this would happen once the federal funds are gone. So this, this is a problem that could leave a hole in our budgets going forward. There's also the fact that the foundation aid formula is no longer running as, as designated, including the use of outdated data and inaccurate measures of student need and inaccurate regional cost factors. Also, the executive budget proposes consolidating eleven expense-based aids into a combined services aid and then cutting that aid by almost 700 million dollars. The problem with that is that these aids are meant to be reimbursement costs and this removes one of the only predictable sources of funding in the budgeting so that there would be no way to predict services aid in the future. And it also would de-incentivize shared, shared services through OSCEs. So this is just another mechanism to reduce state aid funding. The budget also proposing, proposes transportation aid for the spring 2020 during school closures only for bus runs that deliver meals and devices or homework to students and doesn't permit aid for payments made to ensure that buses remain on standby during school closures. It also proposes to cut nineteen million dollars of the annual payment towards prior year adjustments. And, you know, all of this in line of the property tax cap, which is, you know, a limit on raising revenue. So the request that the resolutions are making is that we call on the state legislators to reject the executive budget proposal that, that fully supplants state aid with federal stimulus funds. It calls on state legislators to, to ensure that STAR payments to school districts are taken out of the state schooling runs and that all STAR reimbursements are fully paid. It calls on legislators to work towards full funding of foundation aid and to reject the executive budget proposal to combine the eleven expense-based aids in this, this new combined services aid. And it calls on them to deliver transportation aid for payments made during the COVID pandemic closures in the spring 2020 and in the 2020, 21 school year. And it also calls on state legislators, legislators to reject the executive budget proposal to permanently require local school districts to fund the state's eighteen-point-four to share of the residential placement costs for special education. And also to maintain and fund the prior year adjustments of approved school aid claims. And finally, it calls on the state legislators to set the allowable growth factor in the tax levy calculation for the coming year at two percent to make up for COVID-related expenses. So that's what the resolution is calling for and, so does anyone want to discuss it? Does everyone, would everyone agree on approving this resolution and agree on sending it to our state assembly members and the senate and the board of regents and the state ed commissioner? And let's see, anyone else? I think that's about it.
Sure. We'll get GAPGPA two, two, I'm part of this, right?
Well, I, I think the use of federal stimulus funds to, to supplant state aid would certainly create a hole in the state budget for education. We'd be in big trouble.
These are some really challenging precedents to send out as well.
Yeah.
I am absolutely on board with us.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. There are always like these big precedents at every state, state aid budget that I've looked at. There's always something new that's never been done before. So there's a lot of particularly challenging times for school districts. And I, and I really don't like the use of the federal aid in that manner.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, they, what the state should be providing.
Yeah, it's quite sad, actually. We're, we're fortunate, but this could be devastating to some other districts.
Yeah. So if everyone is in favor of approving this resolution, I call for motion in the second.
I'll move.
Right, I vote the second. Hillary, the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then. Thank you. And now we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. David, can you pull up my presentation? I'm going to do my piece first before we move into the budget presentations. Okay, so I first just want to start by sharing the remote numbers. So you'll see that they're all going in the right direction, meaning we have more students that are onsite this, this week than we did the last time we're at, um, together as a, as a, as a board, including at Horace Greeley High School. So this is, this is great news for us. We're still running the same mile that we have been running since the beginning of the year, but I'm going to talk about in the, in the next few moments, some of our thinking around whether or not we're going to make some adjustments at Greeley. Tony, do we have any update in terms of the staffing?
We did recently. We did actually receive communication. Oh, sorry. Did I break it? Effect on technology. We did receive updated medical documentation from a couple of our teachers who are out, who are in the process of getting vaccinated and indicated they will be returning. So it has not happened yet, but they've communicated that is their intent. And we do have one person who has returned as a result of being vaccinated.
So maybe we'll have a different update next week, but if not, next week definitely we'll talk about people. Okay. Okay, so then we just wanted to go over our quarantine numbers. So you'll, this is from March third. You'll see we had a, a bit of a blip in, between the last meeting and this meeting due to an exposure at Greeley. I do want to share with you that our, our numbers and our parent numbers only reflect what happens within our school district. We know that other students are excluded from school due to exposure outside of our, of our building, but we don't include that in our numbers here. We only include numbers for students who are exposed based on what happens within the context of our district. We certainly couldn't track what happens outside in people's private homes and in the communities, but we are involved in making sure that those students are in school because the department help would call us to let us know that there was an exposure and we, we need to make sure we contact those families or families would call us themselves. All right, so we've, uh, there's been some incoming information from families who want us to consider having full-day instruction at Greeley. So first, I, I just want to clear up. Well, we have students who are in in the morning and in the afternoon. There are a number of students who have been coming full day and we've been able to accommodate requests from families who would like their kids to come full day based on, on our numbers right now. What we are talking about is it makes sense to open fully. I know many districts around us are doing that, but some of what we're thinking about when we consider whether or not that makes sense for us is quarantining. So right now, it's not clear if we move down to three feet with a barrier, which is required, which is on this agenda tonight for us to be able to move forward and purchase barriers if we do want to go down to three feet at Greeley, which would allow us to have all kids come every day for a full day. What the quarantine expectations would be in, from the department help if there's exposure. So we have, there are a number of schools that have moved down to three feet. So I'm interested to see what happens in those particular districts in the upcoming weeks. So that's the first thing that we are thinking about in terms of whether or not it makes sense to move down to a three-foot space between desks because we would certainly have to do that into this model. Obviously lunch is a challenge for us because that's where high exposure and quarantine could happen. So this past, last week, we had our architect onsite with John walking the buildings to determine where there would be good spaces for there to be tenting so kids could eat lunch under the tents, um, so we could space everybody out. Plus, if we had to implement weather, that would be problematic. So we've already engaged in that process and there is a documentation output, SED, as we did for the middle schools to see if that's a, a viable option for us onsite. You know, we have, we have continual concerns about vans and course. And so we're talking about where those classes need to take place based on some recent events that have happened and that it caused us to make some decisions about quarantining. So we've been moving those classes outside. So that's something that we're thinking about in terms of opening, not only this year fully, but for next year as well. We need to have a process, and Josh is working on this for kids, that we can very quickly check them in to make sure that the screener's done at the high school level. It's different from all other buildings right now. The admin team's standing at the entrance and they're checking kids, but we can't be doing that if we have large numbers coming in. And then finally, I, I will share, just to be very honest, we've had some real difficulty at times, not at all times, but at times with parent cooperation when there's been positive cases and transparency and who should be excluded from school based, based on exposure. So we're concerned about that. So is that something that we're talking about? Because obviously if we move forward to a full opening, there'll be a higher potential that will need more family cooperation if a, if a child is positive. And right now, it just hasn't been our consistent experience at Greeley that we've received that for a whole bunch of different reasons. So those are things that we're talking about.
But Christine, wait, I have questions.
Yes.
So we've had K.A. open since September for, you know, a hundred percent.
Right.
And that's been at six feet.
That's right.
Distancing. So we're only talking about the, the high school.
That's correct.
With the, with the shields and the three feet.
Right.
Right.
Because we have our pod now at the middle schools.
Yeah, I know that, but I just wanted to be clear for people that, that the three feet would be only at Greeley.
That's correct.
If we do that.
That's correct. So this is what we want to do, this is what we're doing next. We're going to send something out tomorrow to the high school families to ascertain who actually wants to come back full-time and who wants to stay remote. So we feel that's the first step in our process. We're going to look at that information and we're going to plan forward. But in the meantime, if we are going to move down to this three-foot mile, we need to be able to purchase the desk shields that are necessary for us to do that. And there's some lead time. So just to be clear with parent, parents, the soonest we would do this would be equal twelfth. That would be a week after week back from spring break because we would need enough time to prep with. There's a lot that needs to go into how we're going to do this, but the first step is to figure out who actually want to do this at the high school level. So that's our thinking around, around really opening up full day, for full-day instruction. But if there are parents out there who want their kids to attend full day, they should contact the school administration and we'll be able, right now, we're able to accommodate those requests. And I'll have some more information through the next meeting because by that time we'll have the survey, uh, we'll have the survey data. So I just asked Adam, I think we've got new information about testing. So Adam, can you just provide a brief update, please?
Yes, thank you. So at our last meeting, I shared that New York State had petitioned the federal government to not give any assessments. And the federal government had replied in general terms that it won't be granting any blanket waivers. To my knowledge, it didn't reply specifically to New York State, but it seems that New York State's moving forward with the idea that the federal government has rejected that appeal to not give any assessments. So what the New York State ed has said is assuming that they don't get that ultimate rejection, they have to go on this idea that the federal government is not granting any of these blanket waivers. So they're, they have to move forward with state testing. And so we are required by the federal government to give ELA and math tests in grades three through eight and also our science tests in grades four and eight. So New York State just communicated earlier this week that assuming the United States Department of Education doesn't change its stance on this and communicate something counter to what they might anticipate, they've made some adjustments to our testing process. So one thing that the New York State ed has said is that we, the school districts can only test in person. There won't be any remote testing, but they did say that, say that fully remote students will not be required to come in. We've decided to offer an option for our remote students. If they'd like to come in and take the assessment in person in their home schools, they obviously can do that, but they won't be required to come in and take the test. For ELA and math, it will only be the multiple choice. So normally these tests span a couple of days, so they're going to scale that back so there won't be any extended response. And instead, it will just be multiple choice. And they are pulling out the field test questions. Usually they will embed field test questions within the exam so they can use them as almost like trial or practice questions to see how the students do. The students never know which are the field, we don't either know which are the field test questions and which are the real questions, but this year they're going to pull those out. So they actually are shortening, shortening the exam to just one day and only multiple choice for both ELA and math. We wanted, wanted to note that students in grade eight will take both the math eight and the algebra regions. The math eight assessment is shortened as well. It'll just be the multiple choice on, on one day. And by doing that, by giving them math eight and the algebra regions to our eighth-grade students, then they will not be obligated to take a regions exam at Greeley, which opens up a lot more flexibility for curriculum and accurately. So if we didn't give our eighth graders both of those exams, we're required to give one. If we didn't give them both, then students would have to come to Greeley and take the geometry exam the next year, which we don't think is best for our curriculum and our students. So that's how we're going to proceed. Science, I, I said before, is just the multiple choice part of the science test and there's no performance test. In the past, there had been a performance part of that assessment. So that's, I'm being pulled out this year as well. So those are the adjustments that we know of right now. And we'll provide more information as we go forward. And we'll be sending a communication out to parents about, you know, summarizing that information.
So I, I also asked Adam if he could give you an update on algebra. As you know, all of our students in eighth grade are taking algebra next year. We plan to continue that model moving into next year. We're going to have a meeting with our parents at seventh grade next week. So I just wanted Adam to kind of update you what our thinking is around making that decision here for our students in the district.
So we moved to, we've moved to algebra as our eighth-grade course this year. We have been talking about that for quite some time now. It became really important this year because if we didn't do this, we'd be tracking the class viability, which we thought was really problematic across all the subject areas because we weren't mixing the kids through the class. So we went with this algebra for all model, which we had been thinking about moving to regardless of the pandemic, prior to the pandemic. At, at this point, we've got really strong evidence that our students are doing very well despite the challenges. Math right now is taught in larger spaces. So it's being taught in like cafeteria spaces that have been converted over to classrooms, gymnasium spaces. So that's obviously challenging. And, you know, that our faculty is teaching not only in-person students, but also simultaneously teaching students at home. So despite the So despite those challenges, our students are doing really well. We were able to get winter map scores, NWA map scores this year and compare them to last year. So despite some reduced instructional time based on the short periods and those other things that I mentioned, our students are really doing well. We also think by moving to an algebra for all model, we think it's a, it's just a more equitable model. It's a more inclusive model. It includes students in, in one place and doesn't break them out by ability level, which we think is important. For as long as we can do that, we believe we can differentiate up to challenge our top students as well as down to be able to make sure that all of our students can be successful. Another thing is that in this model, all students can access five years of high school math. And high school math is a real differentiator when it comes to colleges. So for students, for all students to be able to access that fifth year of math opens up a lot of options for a lot of students. And college admissions officers have communicated to us that they do look at that last year of math to see the level of rigor. And by pushing algebra down into eighth grade, it gives students, in many cases, students that weren't accelerated previously have an extra year because they took that first high school algebra math course in eighth grade. So those, those are the basics of that. We're going to send a letter summarizing this to the community, probably the block tomorrow, will definitely go out this week. And we plan on having a kind of an informational webinar for parents on the 25th at seven o'clock. So that information will be included in the letter and we'll make sure we record that webinar so that the parents can make that zoom and be able to watch it over again. So thanks to Josh Colwell Block for all of his work behind this and support. We'll hear from him in just a little bit when we do the budget presentations.
I just want to say, Adam, I also, I like this because it doesn't put kids in, in a trap too early. Some kids just develop a little bit later and, you know, if they're not strong in math in middle school, they might develop that strength and, you know, the early tracking could be very discouraging. So I, I like that this is a lot more closer.
But it's working. Right? It's, it's, it's working. Our kids are doing well. It's showing in our independent math data and we're in the middle of a pandemic. So I definitely think we should replicate this when we're in more normal times and, and I'm sure that our students will do just as well. So we do have a lot of work to do with our teachers over the summer since this is going to be our curricular pathway moving forward and working collectively with our sixth and seventh grade teachers to see if we need to make some adjustments. But I do think this is more in line with our philosophical stance as a district than running a sectioned out math program in eighth grade. It's just not, it's just, it's just not who we are, so we're able to make this shift moving forward. I want to remind everyone that the first really scholarship fund, FENS Fit, is this Friday and congratulations to our custodial and maintenance team. They are recipients of the Ed Haberman Award. And so we look forward to zooming in and watching them being honored. It's a well-deserved accomplishment. So congratulations to John Drogomondo and our entire staff. So we really appreciate them and we want to thank the Scholarship Fund for honoring them and also for honoring Georgia, who's a wonderful parent and advocate for all the students in this district. So it should be a really nice event. So I just wanted to mention that out collectively to the community. So with that, the only other thing, the superintendent's report before we move into the budget presentations is that now that I have a pretty firm understanding, we're not going to go back to our traditional instructional law before the end of the year. I am recommending we continue with our half day Wednesday so that we can continue the important business of the district that we aren't able to do because teachers are in pause all day long at the K eight levels so that we continue our half days through the rest of the school year on Wednesday afternoons. And then I also made the adjustment to the middle school where typically traditionally they would have half days at the end of the year for testing. I'm not quite sure they're going to be testing, but I do know that our teachers will need that the same time that the elementary teachers receive during the last three days of this school year in order to finish all of their professional duties and make sure that their grading reports are concluded because the middle school model is more like the elementary model this year based on the time that teachers are with kids during the school day. So I did reflect the end of the school day to just make it traditional half days for all students so that the middle school would be reflected in that, in the calendar as well.
So we need to approve that, the calendar?
Okay. And pushing, I have a letter of multiple things that needs to be pushed out either tomorrow or Friday. It involves the calendar, involves some testing information, involves traveling, involves the student survey for really. So I'll be updating the community at some point either tomorrow afternoon or Friday morning.
Okay. So I'd like to ask the board for a motion to adopt the revised 2020-21 district calendar. Second? Any, any other comments or questions for Christine? No, thank you for, for staying on top of this, Christine. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Okay, so thank you. So now we're going to turn it over to Adam Pease to try and start our first budget presentation tonight. Maybe Josh and Jason and Karen can come up and Tony, John and I can go down so there's enough space up here. Oh, they did? Oh, forget it.
No, no, get them up here and you can go right through.
All right. Who's up here? Karen, do you want to come up? And then Jason, why don't you get him to come on up?
All right. So as we, as we play a little musical chairs, I'm just going to get started. I think you have, you have what we need with the presentation up here. So I'm happy to kick off the night of budget presentations. We've got quite a few and we've got pretty comprehensive presentations, so we'll try to keep them moving and then they'll be posted for the community and for the board to, to be able to examine more closely at your leisure. And certainly we can take questions on anything that you, you have questions about. So I'm really happy to present the curriculum and instruction budget this year as I have done in the past. I'd just like to give you a quick summary of some of the things that we've accomplished this year and how we, what we use to guide our decisions with regard to developing the budget. So we, we start off with the board's strategic questions. I know you're very familiar with those and we drill down a little bit, a little bit further into the district's strategic priorities. I've been asked recently, asked recently for a little bit more language about what these six priorities mean. I have three of them up there, so I added some of that language. I won't read it to you now, but I thought it would be helpful to the community to know a little bit more about those six priorities. So we have instructional space to amplify learning, district-wide assessment practices, social emotional, social emotional learning, curriculum alignment, curriculum alignment in general, technology as a tool to personalize learning. And then recently, board education discussion about equitable affirming and culturally responsive learning environment. So that's our, our sixth and added priority, which is a fantastic addition. We've done a lot of work in that area. So this is our, our vision for teaching and learning for the district. And you can see some of the highlighted terms up there like students and our faculty to be engaged in meaningful inquiry using their imagination, invention, interaction to work cooperatively to create and arrive at solutions. So you've heard those words before. We continue to hold true, develop the budget that will allow our students to engage and work around those things as terms of being central to us. So this I am going to take just a minute on the curriculum and instruction has these like, these pillars that we've defined as like what's really important to us and what should surround all of our work. The first one's about powerful and innovative teaching and learning through inspired professional development. And the second one is about developing every single student in the district through rigorous instruction and powerful, relevant and culturally responsive curriculum. So it's like an instructional component and a curricular component to each of these. So just briefly to talk a little bit about curriculum, again, I won't read through the whole bulleted list, but you can see some of our curriculum priorities. I know you're familiar with, with all of these. I've had the opportunity to present to the board and the community about these things, but we continue to, to hold several of them really close, close to our work in terms of, you know, the, the ones that will be multi-year work. In other words, we've made a lot of progress on, for example, phonics in K two is fully implemented at this point. So now we're really focused on fidelity to that phonics first program, which has already begun to pay dividends. And you'll also see that we've woven that equity strand through our curriculum priorities as well. And to speak to that a little bit, I took a couple of shots of some of our updates to our classroom libraries and you can see that we've been really making enough effort to make sure that we have more, a more diverse cadre of authors and characters for our students to experience. So these are some of our middle school on the left and high school on the right, new additions to classroom libraries. This is about kind of the resources it takes to make sure our students have access to really good, good updated curriculum resources. So some of our professional learning structures, I know you're familiar with the majority of these. We, we engage in professional learning in a variety of ways. Faculty meetings, superintendent conference days, we have our faculty, professional developers, administrators and consultants engaging in a variety of different types of courses that they offer, in-service courses, learning teams, book clubs, classroom coaching, fellowships, et cetera. The, the community and the Board of Education has been very, very supportive of our work in curriculum and instruction and given us a high-powered and fast-moving professional development team. It's a team of five teacher leaders that work just below the surface, that really are the engine of a lot of this work and obviously it's supported by our administrative team and, and other faculty who lean into this. So some of our notable professional learning initiatives, you'll see the tie to our district's priority, things like ruler, obviously literacy, next gen, science standards, social studies standards, you know, those continue to be really important to, to our work as well as a connection to equity and culturally responsive classrooms. This, this is the first time I was thinking as I was going through my own slides, this is the first time I've ever shared a slide with the board and said, I didn't do any of this. This was our plan for the summer of 2020 and it was connected to the Summer Olympics, which at the time we thought were going to happen. And you can see on the bottom, it says, registration opens March 16th. So we know that last year, March 12th was the last day of, in, in student learning. And so this was actually, we had developed this whole summer plan like we typically do for, for what the district needs to kind of bring us to the next level. And then the pandemic came and we realized we don't need any of this. We actually need to completely pivot, throw this out totally and, and start over. And so we actually designed this, which was, which this actually was our summer last year. And so I guess what I wanted to communicate is your investment in the curriculum and instruction work in the professional development team allows us the resources to be able to pivot and have the people power in the department to be able to have a complete plan and then say that we're not going to do any of that and be able to pivot. And the district was able to do that. And so we spent our summer engaged in professional learning with a, with a pretty good guess as to what instruction might look like. And we worked hand in glove with Josh Cole blocking technology. He had been out ahead of the curve in purchasing a lot of technology, like the webcams that are in our classrooms and other technology that our students and teachers are using. So we spent the summer doing that professional development and it's paid dividends all the way through the school year. So I was happy to pivot that. Our resources also allowed us to do, this was a shot from West Orchard. Many of the people here know, know what this is. This was actually our planning of, this is where we designed the, the system that allowed our schools to be open. So obviously that has a budgetary impact and we were able to absorb that into the curriculum and instruction budget. And those were our, our teacher planners and administrators partnering to try to figure out how we put our schools fully in this whole newly designed model. These are many familiar faces to you and experts and authors from the field that we've had the opportunity to work with through the resources that the boarding, boarding community has provided. So you see the many of them and we can pull the sample of each of their books. We often will lean on that, you know, the, the books that they write to move our, push our district forward. These are, these are some of the learning teams. We, we let, we have teachers engage in book clubs as a way to do professional learning and these are some of the books that they are engaged with as part of like these book club learning teams in conversations about how to, how to, you know, lift the level of their working classrooms and how they might use these books with their students. So again, you can see that, that strong kind of commitment to the equity work that, that we have committed to as a district in those choices. And this was just a screenshot of some of the kind of collage of some of the professional development that's been going on through the district. So my last kind of celebratory slide is about our last superintendent conference day, which was March 12th. An incredible statistic is we had 128 presenters from the district presenting on that day, which is just incredible at a time when educators feel the crushing pressure of teaching through a pandemic, that we asked them to volunteer to step up to lead professional learning for their colleagues and 128 teachers and leaders and a handful of community members leaned in to, to help support that work. So I thought it was a pretty inspirational thing. All right, so let me get to the, the actual budget numbers. Please, that it's a fairly unremarkable budget without any significant changes, but I did want to speak to a couple of numbers that need to jump out to you. The, the first one is, is the $40,000 increase in contractual. And that $40,000 is earmarked completely for the equity RFP that we've been discussing. So that, that $40,000 is a significant increase and will be, will be spent really as part of that equity RFP through Dr. Sananis and Philip Marcus's office. So they will make sure that we work together with that piece. And then the other thing that stands out is that traveling conferences is increased by $2,500. We obviously haven't been spending much money on travel, but what has happened is because all of the conferences have become virtual, we have access to some like national and international conferences that are all like remote now. So you can like zoom in and hear keynotes and experts and engage in professional learning with people from around the country, which pre-pandemic was not possible because in many cases you had to fly there. So, so we actually saw, we're seeing kind of an uptick in our educators' ability to access conferences. So it's likely we won't spend as much on travel, but the conference, we wanted to increase that conference line touch.
Can I just, can I just interrupt? I don't want to lose the credit.
Yes.
Do you think that will go on post, post pandemic? Because that's a great opportunity and there are many ways that the pandemic has changed thinking around how we do things.
I think it will. I think we're going to see a lot, many more virtual conferences. You know, there, there is something to, I know we've all experienced, there is something to being in, being in, being in a room with people and being able to engage in a personal way. But the benefit of being able to access, you know, kind of national or even international experts without leaving your office and then being able to jump right back into your, your work is, is just, it's really valuable. So I hope that will continue. But I also hope that, that we'll have the opportunity to, at some point, we've done so much learning visiting universities, visiting places that are just like, like businesses that really thought we're thinking like Microsoft Research Lab that we visited last year. We have an invitation to, to a couple of different school districts. How West are doing some innovative things that were put on hold? So our hope is to be able to open some of that up at some point, but hopefully we can keep the, the best of the virtual conference attendance going forward.
Why was, why was the travel conference number twice what it was in approved budget versus actual year end?
I'm not sure what happened in 1920 to increase that number. Do you mean from the 18,000 to the 41,000? I could look back into my notes and see what that expenditure was. I'm not sure what that major increase was.
Because in 41, then you went down to 22. And we know this year, we can do a record.
Yeah, it was a middle school conference. The middle school conference.
Oh, no.
We sent the whole team to a middle school conference.
That was Dr. Massa this year, I think for his, it was his first year or his second year and he brought a team down to the middle school conference. Was that?
I think that was that year.
That number, yeah.
Well, there if I got it, we'll send you an email.
It was a middle school conference? So it was sort of one-off?
I think it was an AMLI conference, which is an association of middle schools conference that Dr. Massa wanted to bring his team to, to kind of start to, start to re-envision Seven Bridges in terms of, of shifting some things into a more closely aligned middle school model. But we'll, we'll double check for you. All right. And then this is the, this is the regular school budget. You can see those lines there that continue to remain, you know, kept them as flat as we could. And then there's a summary budget of the previous slides that shows the increase of that is really the $40,000 for the equity RFP and the $2,500 for the travel conference line that, that increased there. So that's the curriculum and instruction budget. And next up, we have the technology budget. I don't know if it's, if we should go right through technology too, and then we could take a break and, and ask questions if you have them. I think so.
Hi, everybody. Adam talked so much about the instructional side of things. The technology budget really is going to focus on the infrastructure, security, you have all those pieces. Is it not close enough? I think not. Get it. So the technology vision of the, the department vision really is unchanged. This year, we're really focusing on deploying technologies into classrooms for hybrid learning and also focusing on educational law two D compliance. This next year, as we keep moving forward, we really want to start to focus on security we really want to start to focus on security and privacy and work through a lot of those pieces to making sure that we have a safe, secure, private network for our students to, a, our budget components are always working from how the intersection of infrastructure, professional learning, and data start to form our innovative learning environments. And it's really important to have all three of those working in synergy with each other in order to create the best environment possible. The budget this year, you can see that there are some increases, and I'm going to go over each one of those individually. The most important piece of this is as we go through adding more equipment to our network, adding more services to our network, becoming, and as cybersecurity compliance and education law 2D compliance, our budget needs to increase as parts of, as a component of that. ED Law 2D has had a huge impact on the time and cost of our department. This law, while really in spirit incredible and really does in spirit protect our school district and protect our students and our data, the actuality of the paperwork and the requirements that come with it are humongous and start to really consume large parts of our technicians, clerical, myself in there. So there are a bunch of different components. I work with a regional group that originally started as a group to understand the law, and now we're working as a group with Julie Shaw to start to create efficiencies across school districts and also to work with the state DPO in understanding what the impact this law has had on our school districts. We have selected a bunch of providers to provide security and safety for our network. The first one, Amplified IT, just completed a full audit of our entire Google domain, and they said that it is extremely secure in comparison to other school districts, but as well created a roadmap for us to even further secure the domain and what to do as we expand our services with it. And they're an independent company, and we allow guided access, while I'm looking over their shoulder, for them to explore every in and out of our Google services. And they provided a 136-page report for us and locked us through that, which was pretty incredible. Acture is our core data services team. They provide us our five technicians, our two database analysts, our network engineer, our help desk. And we just recently added a Level One Database Analyst to provide for our health screen services, for our health screener, and all of the additional database and services that we have with our students. GoGuardian is a new advanced filter that we're going to be migrating to at the end of the school year. They originally started just with Chromebooks, but what now they've done is expanded into full-fledged network compliance and full-fledged network filtering. So we are going to move towards that. That also service provides us with reporting and notification. If students do a variety of things on their one-to-one devices that are deemed unsafe, we, with this service, can automatically get a notification. And really, for the health and safety of our students, it's an incredible product. GCN is our compliance and our staff training services. CoreVTS provides us with newly, with a retainer and incident response services. So if there is a cyber attack on our network, they are at the ready, ready to go, a phone call away 24/7 to come in and deploy and work with our school district. So we've created our digital learning goals, and these are the same, and these have served us really well in creating our environment and working in professional development with all of our faculty and staff. We are very, very fortunate that we have had our one-to-one rollout, and we did. It was almost the perfect timing, because by the time last year that we went onto remote instruction, every single student in our school district had a device, which was the first step in being able to have the continuity of learning for our students. This year, and going into the next year, a new, more durable Microsoft Surface laptop has come out. So our plan is to refresh the fifth graders with the most durable device that's out there, and then also to explore the high school model and just ensure that it's still working. Is a bring-your-own-device model in the high school still the most efficient, the best model for our instructional environment. We have done, and my team and technicians have done this Herculean task of turning every single nook and cranny of our school district into a hybrid learning space. They have deployed cameras, devices, TVs, all sorts of equipment, microphones, wireless upgrades, and worked with internet redundancy and upgrading, upgrade everything that we have so that essentially, if all 35-plus students, plus all of our faculty and staff are on a Zoom call at the same exact time, we have the capability of handling that within our school district. And it has worked flawlessly. There were bumps in the beginning of it, which is to be expected. We do a rollout over the course of a few weeks, but we see this flawlessly working in our classroom. And I'm so proud of my team and our instruction team and our school district for really being so agile to turn on a dime, to create learning environments so that all of our students are able to learn in the best possible of methods. One other big project that we will be working on is a network redundancy project. Just quickly, our old internet line was the red, and it went north, all the way north to Cotonou and came south. And we've since changed that to go south to the city. So the red is gone, and the purple going south is where our internet line is going. As we know, there are lots of woods and lots of trees and lots of wind and snow. So we are, the purple is what we currently have, but the orange, we're looking to extend an additional internet line so that if one does go out, we have a completely and fully redundant internet connection to our school district. It very, very, very rarely happens, but we want to make sure that it never happens. Our inventory, as you can see, our mobile devices are relatively going to remain the same, because everybody does have a mobile device. The increase a little bit is just so that when they break, that we have a couple spares with us. But as we're reliant more on mobile technology, as we all have our mobile devices, we become less reliant on fixed devices. We want to make sure that our environment is mobile so that people can move around. So as you can see, that our desktops and printers decrease, our servers are decreasing as well. The advice that we've received where school districts used to have a major data center in the basements of their schools, that is no longer a model that is secure. And moving to secure cloud environments is a much better way to provide the security and also the efficiency of our devices. So we're consistently decreasing the number of servers that we have on site. Again, this is just our goals coming in, so of the maintaining all of our mobile devices and decreasing our fixed devices. And again, so the increases that we have really become in our contractual services line, where we're increasing because of ED Law 2D requirements, our cybersecurity and data privacy contracts that we have. And then the biggest piece is the addition of the network database technician that we've heard have added to it. Our software has just increased mostly because the products that we have, that our teachers have been using, have increased significantly. And the usage of that, because a lot of them are not unlimited use items, so that as we put more data onto it, the costs start to increase, and as we add more devices. And our supplies are really around the fifth-grade laptop refresh. And those are the differences from there. We are also adding an Associate Director of Technology, and that was in the previous presentation. This person can really start to, what I'm calling, work with the wires and pliers of the district, start to make our infrastructure really efficient, provide our ED Law 2D compliance, and start to work with our data team and our technical services team, really to provide the best experience possible for our students and our families. When things break, we can get them fixed faster and start to provide that oversight for our team. And again, back to our components that make up the technology budget.
Does anyone have any questions?
Good job. Except for...
No, thank you, but I just, I feel very proud of all of you. Thank you.
So Josh, question. State aid and computer software is going up by $45,000. What is that?
Why, why is the increase of $45,000 in state aid and software? So, so that is, that huge increase is because of two things. One is, we've increased the instructional services that our students are using right now. We've, our students, our Zoom license, for instance, is the biggest ticket item of that. And what's also happening is that as our students and teachers and faculty are creating more data, right, so our Adobe suite, for instance, everybody's starting to create multimedia, those services aren't unlimited services, so we've had to bump it up to the next level of service for the entire school district. And then the other big piece of it is all of the backend systems that require mobile device management. So as we increase the devices, and those devices are, include our Apple TVs, our display boards, every one of those goes into a mobile device management system, and those we pay for per device. So, so when, once you start to total all of that up, and when I went line by line by line of what we do, that came out to a $45,000 increase of our software services.
So I guess the sort of Mr. Governor, that state aid and sort of state aid?
Yeah, so, so we get state aid back. The reason why it's called state-aided software is we actually get money back in state aid from items, and we purchase specific soft, instructional software items that run the foundations of the school from that line. So every year afterwards, we get, we get money back from the state in the form of state aid.
Those are the expense-based aids, part of the expense-based aids that we were talking about, that the governor wants consolidated to one block, right? These are reimbursements for specific items. So that falls under the category. I don't know if those were part of the 11 that he wants to consolidate, but...
So based on a lot of what we've heard from teachers who have presented to us about how they've been able to do things differently during the pandemic, which is amazing, a lot of it, a lot of what we heard sounds like some of the tech capabilities that they've gained this year, even when hopefully we're all back in a normal school setting, they'd like to be able to keep using because of some of the creative and innovative ways that they're able to merge the technology with the more traditional instruction. So I know this is a guess, but if you had to guess, would you anticipate that these numbers, sort of for the next five years, for argument's sake, would stay sort of more at this level because we're going to continue to use a lot of these technologies and what you were talking about of not being limited, not being unlimited access?
Yeah, I do guess that it would stay approximately the same. What I think is going to happen is we're going to start to see which services have really made the biggest impact on our students. I do see Zoom, which is widely used, stay in our classrooms. You know, we just had a teacher Zoom with a scientist in Germany, and all the students were watching it. And we want to keep that, that alive, right? So I do think we will see a lot of these services maintained. I think that we'll start to see which ones work best and which one didn't, maybe cut a few of them out and maybe make them more efficient. But I do see a lot of the services remaining, especially the ones like now that we're doing all the creative things, we're going to keep doing that, right? So I think that's important.
With something like Zoom, just as an example, like if we don't have all the kids in the district potentially using it, but just have it for what you're describing as these really like special Zoom, is that a place where potentially we'd need a different type of license going forward, or is it really, you just pay for it?
So we, the way the license works is we pay for faculty and staff, not for students. So my guess would be is that we would continue to pay for that for faculty and staff, because it's not, they don't have a model where we can share our license.
Can I add a little bit to that, Josh?
Thank you.
What we're, my hope and what we're seeing, and I hope it stays, is that we're starting to leverage teaching in spaces where the walls don't matter as much. And this idea of having book clubs across, like student book clubs across the district, or, you know, maybe even with students next door, or with students in another building, or classrooms where, you know, classes compartment are across elementary schools or across middle schools, or, you know, like the flexibility of some of the technology and some of those skills have real interesting and fun and powerful like educational applications post, you know, pandemic, I think. And I'd also say that the skills that teachers need to really personalize instruction are very similar to the skills they're using now. And so the good news with that is it gave us some runway, as we've been talking about that, all the way back to like PLI and some of the grants that CSF had supported originally, the district's commitment. But that personalized learning push was around, and I think it leveraged some of that. But the idea with personalized learning is everybody's not doing the same thing exactly the same way at the same time. So technology assists that push in a lot of ways. And so now there's, there's been this like incredible disruption to some of the traditional practices that were holding us back. And so that, those tech skills, where we had some early adopters and then some that were just starting to adopt and others that maybe said, "It's not for me." Well, now everybody had to figure it out. So now we've got that, like that skill set has really leveled up, and we've had the technology to support it. So I think that that technology is here to stay. What I'd really like to see sometime soon post-pandemic is that the kids can get back together physically and sort of like cluster around the table and build things and whiteboard things and like some of the innovative spaces that we've built, that now all of a sudden we've got desks in rows, and the teachers are being really creative to get kids to collaborate digitally. But I hope we can blend those roles together post-pandemic.
So the one-on-one rollout was the last really big funded initiative. So if you had unlimited funds, where, where would you think the next big initiative ought to be?
Yeah, I mean, I think the next big, so we have all the stuff, right? Like, I think that that's the piece of it that I would probably start to, like, wire classrooms for, like, for basically like having Zoom rooms in certain spaces, right? So that basically we could have a more seamless interaction with Skyping scientists, with Skyping people and bringing people in via video and that. And I think virtual reality comes into play there. I think that, so, and I think the other big piece of it is around creating professional development groups to really start to explore, how do we make the most of the technology that we have? I do see a lot of our equipment budget decreasing slightly because of all of the technology that we currently have in the district for the next few years. I mean, if you think about what we have, right, all of our students have iPad, all of our students have Surfaces, right? Like, all of those pieces, they, they can do tons and tons and tons of things. And it's really about creating the experiences and environments for students to be able to do that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we should, thank you, Josh. Thank you. I'm not sure what the next presentation is. Is it Ellen? Okay, and I think this is a good opportunity for me to introduce Karen Smith at the board level, our Director of Special Education. We're so happy that she's able to join us tonight with Ellen.
Very nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us. We're happy to have you here. Thank you.
Karen's been here for a short time, but I feel like she's been here forever. So that's great. She came in with a lot of experience and hit the ground running, and so we're really, really pleased to be able to have her tonight. So Ellen?
Okay. And I want to echo that. It's a really pleasure partnering with Karen, and I appreciate her hard work and her being here tonight. Okay, so you all know before either Karen and I arrived last year, there was a restructuring of special education at the administrative level and the way in which we chair our CSE meetings, the folks in those, in those spots. And so that, that has, has all been complete, right, at this point? So we have three new CSE chairpeople at the beginning of this year, Dr. Sherri Scher, Joseph Drew, and Rosa Amendola. And I'm sure that our families who are most closely working with them can speak to what a really fine job they've done transitioning into those roles. They are all psychologists. So this district is committed to inclusion, and it really drives... So this district is committed to inclusion, and it really drives all of our decision-making around special education. We want equitable opportunities for all of our students in a least restrictive environment, not just because that's a mandate, but because it's the right thing for our students. Not only our students with disabilities, it's the right thing for all of our students. Academic and social development, again, happens best in an inclusion environment. But we want to integrate our services for those students and keep them in general education classrooms as often as possible. We also know that students learn differently, and we have to be mindful of that when we look at our continuum of services. A particular focus for us has been this year, and Karen will speak to this in a little while, looking at our transition planning services and how we are working with families and our students when they imagine life beyond high school. So our priorities are to provide our students with a free, appropriate education in the least restrictive setting, which is a general education classroom in most cases. We also know that we need to provide professional development for all of our staff, not just our special educators, so that they can best meet the needs of all of our students in classrooms. We really want to look at our pre-referral process as we move forward. So what are the interventions taking place before a student moves into special education programming? And we want to look also at where we can expand what we're doing now with respect to our continuum of services. We want to really focus on the way that we're delivering instruction so that we can really, really fine tune our progress monitoring and just, again, enhance our transition planning for our students and their families. So I don't know if you, Karen, want to talk a little bit about transition planning, some of the work that you're planning and some of your thoughts?
Sure, so we have partnered with, yeah.
Can we get Karen a mic?
So we have partnered with the Westchester ARC, and they are providing some of the transition support and services they're doing.
Karen, I'm sorry, you have to talk to the microphone, otherwise the people watching and on video won't be able to hear. We can hear you.
You done, Ellen?
Do you want to put everything?
Yeah, no, we can hear you, but I think for purposes of the video, we need to talk a little bit more to the microphone. I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
If you get close.
How's that?
How about now?
That's great.
Oh, okay.
So for our transition services, we are partnering with the Westchester ARC. They're providing group presentations for some of our families, and as well, they're providing individual one-to-one meetings with some of our families and students as they start to think about life after high school. When I consider transition planning, I think it's important to remember that all of our kids are transitioning out of high school. It's not just for a specific group of students. So we need to pay attention to how we're providing all of those supports and services for all of our kids. We're taking a look as well, I just purchased some books for the school counselors about colleges that have specific services for students with educational disabilities, so that we can really start to talk to families about programs and services in colleges, as well as the post-secondary transition planning for our kids in a life skills program. As well, you know, there are other opportunities in the adult world that we want to take a look at for our kids. It's not just about work-based experiences or college experiences. It can be recreational, it can be residential, it can be many different kinds of connections with the community that we really want to partner with our families and with the community to provide those strongest experiences for our kids. So when they leave, everything is in place for them.
Okay. Parent engagement is a priority for us now and will continue to be a priority. We know we need to do always a better job of including parents in decision-making and in, including our students as well in the CSE process and in thinking around how we deliver services. As you know, the district last year began a review of the counseling services here, and that review has continued this year because of the pandemic. It didn't happen in the same timeframe I think it had been anticipated to happen in. So that is really wrapping up now, and we'll be getting a report from them in late May or June. And should the, should the board move ahead with a comprehensive K-12 special education review, our department would be committed to partnering with an agency to really look at everything we do, everything that we do very well, things, areas where we know we can grow. And, and that's, I think, hugely important right now for us to engage with our parent community in discussing what we do well and what, what changes we might want to make moving forward. So these are just classification rates. You can see there are no numbers beyond 1920 at this point. But you can look at where Chappaqua tends to be a district that classifies fewer students overall. And I think that that's probably in great part because the classrooms are so inclusive already that students often, their needs are met before they move into needing special education services. But it's something to look at, and it's, and it's an interesting data point. You can see just, again, this is interesting, there are 13 categories described in IDEA of classification categories, and you can just see it remains pretty, pretty constant in Chappaqua where our students with disabilities fall on that, on that continuum. And you can see, here's an area where you see real evidence of the inclusive model in Chappaqua. Compared to the state and other similar districts, Chappaqua's students with learning disabilities and other disabilities are in general education classrooms much more often for much more of the school day than, than their peers in other districts and in New York State. And this is just a look at, Bed Stuy is in October, and this is just a look at where our students were. So you can see, most, the majority of our students are in district. We have 17 students out of district, two homebound students. And again, that changes, and it can change throughout a school year. And in fact, has changed a little bit since Bed Stuy.
The reason why those numbers are important is when we get to the budget slide and we talk about our budget, a lot of it is driven by our children who are out of district because those are high-cost placements. And so when you see that number go down a little bit, that's where you can see that correlation to why the budget might have been impacted by the number of kids we have of district.
So, and this just tells you for our students who are out of district, where they're out of district, what programs the CSE is recommending for them. And this again is, is just a slide that talks a little bit about where our initial referrals are and, you know, how, what they look like year to year. You can see it's, they're pretty consistent from year to year. So the main components of the budget, budget are contractual services, salaries, tuition for students, and out-of-district placements, which Karen just referenced. We've, we've had students move out of the district. We've had students move beyond term 21 and graduate from, from our services. And we have had an opportunity or two to bring some students back into district who were placed out of district. So that's, that's where, that's where you see a decrease in our budget. Our transportation costs, our students, it's pretty self-evident. And our extended school year program is the school year program in the summer for students who are recommended through the CSE for that program. So I apologize for the small font here, but you can see essentially that we had a little decrease in, in that one line, which is really just our out-of-district tuition. And everything else is remaining pretty, pretty constant. So Karen, do you want to speak to this slide?
Sure, so the Part B grants are the 611 and 619 grants, and they're divided by, the 611 grant is for students ages three to 21, and then the 619 grant is for ages three to five that are in the preschool setting. And that's the amount that we get budgeted back from the state. State aid, I'm going to go into on the next slide in a little bit more detail. I'm going to break it down a little bit for you. Medicaid reimbursement is only for students who are Medicaid eligible and receive related services, mandated related services on an IMP. And that's typically OTPT, speech, skilled nursing services, and counseling support. So this is, the state uses formulas to give us reimbursement for students in special education. And it's important to note that they have an approved rate for all of our students in their placement. It doesn't necessarily equate to the cost to the district for our students in that placement. It's simply what the state gives us back. So they set a rate, and then they give us a percentage. So in other words, if the program costs $100,000, and they have, or say they're agreed is $100,000 of reimbursement, we get 60% of that back. Residential programs are slightly lower, 56% is reimbursed to the district. And again, it's from the state-approved rate, not necessarily the rate or cost of the program. Students who are in a OSCE program or approved public school placements, the formula is slightly more complex. It's the total cost of the program less the district threshold per student reimbursement times .250. Extended school year is also interesting. We get a reimbursement, 80% of allowable expenses based on state-approved rates. However, I will tell you that many of our programs in our extended school year are not state-reimbursable because they are not state-approved because of the ratios of the students that we have in our programs. Typically, the extended school year programs that are reimbursed by the state are special class programs, which we don't have.
Well, that's ending things on a high note.
Do you have any questions for Ellen and Karen?
Yeah, I just had one small question on the proposed budget for next year. Because I see the, the proposed budget, there's like a jump in tuition in private schools. And I'm assuming that's because we already know those placements and they are higher? Or I just, I was curious about that.
The jump in tuition?
Well, to the mic, please. It's, I think, under tuition, private.
The 1.6?
Yeah, yes, that is just, you know, what we, what they're telling us their tuition is going to be.
So they may have been like placements made this year, and then it's going to be reflected in next year's budget, so, okay.
Right. Or we're projecting that we know a student is going to remain in a program, and it's going to be, you know, they're going to be more expensive.
Karen and Ellen, thank you. Karen and Ellen, thank you so much for your comprehensive presentation. Right, and so now we're going to transition to Jason Sima, who will present the physical education, health, and athletic budgets. Just give us one second to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Ellen, thank you so much.
Okay. All set with that? So the way that I'm going to do our presentation tonight is I'm going to start by just giving an overview of the two main components that we have that make up our department. First, the academic piece with the health and physical education. And then I'll give an overview of our athletic department. And then I'll kind of go into what our focus has been throughout this year for everyone. So kind of give you an overview quickly about our physical education and health department. We really focus on physical literacy, basically teaching students skills and really giving them that understanding about how those skills can help develop them into achieving and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. The overview of our 20 teachers and how they look in our six different buildings, broken down into 17 phys ed teachers and three health teachers. And last year, we talked a lot about the new national and state standards. And we had a three-year plan in terms of how this is going to look. And while the pandemic may have had a lot of negative impact on the way that we teach, it actually supported a lot of this plan in helping us move forward at a faster rate. So we're actually closer to our Phase 3 that we had outlined last year than we anticipated. So we did a lot of work over the summer, last spring, and a lot of our professional development work and just our team meetings to help us move our department and our curriculum forward. So that, that's one positive that's come from it. Quick overview of our athletic programs. We provided this organizational chart last year to really break down what our 25 programs look like in the athletic program with our 66 teams and nearly 100 coaches. And that services anywhere between 600 to close to 1,000 student athletes in grade seven through 12 each season. So last year, we put together our strategic plan and created our purpose. And even though our athletic department may have looked a little bit different this year, it really allowed us to focus in on several purposes that allowed us to continue to build off of this strategic plan. First and foremost, just making sure that every student had an opportunity to belong to our program. That's really important to us. It's something we take a lot of pride in. You can see from the picture there from last year during the section championship, where we have a lot of students getting involved in numerous ways, whether it be singing the national anthem, we have really press box that's announcing at some of our games and doing podcasts. And this year, Mr. Friedler has really helped us create opportunities for students to do their student experience with us in the athletic department. So we're hoping that continues a trend for students to get involved with what we're, with what we're doing in the athletic department, aside from just being a participant in our sports programs. Community spirit, that was probably one of the biggest hit pieces from COVID, is just that student engagement and that community engagement. And that's something that we had identified last spring. And we worked collaboratively, not just as a coaching staff, but also with our phys ed staff. And I'll get into detail a little bit more about that later. And communication, over the last four years, we've really developed a lot of processes and systems of operation within our athletic department that were put to the test this year. And we've really streamlined a lot of things, whether it be the way that we put information up on our website so parents know where to find information to support you in terms of how our coaches are communicating with our athletes, and giving parents an understanding of how to get in touch with coaches more readily. So over the past year, our focus, and I'm going to say past year from when the pandemic started, our focus as a department in both physical education and health were defined by these three areas. Redefining our curriculum, community engagement, and returning to interscholaristic athletics. Obviously, in physical education and health, Obviously, in physical education and health, it took on a new meaning when everything shut down and we went remote. A lot of our activities, especially in health, are group-based, and we're really trying to develop opportunities for students to work together and really create a positive environment. This year, we are currently, we worked a lot over the summer to create a new middle school curriculum, scope and sequence. And despite a lot of the limitations that we've been faced with, we've held true to that plan that we put together this summer. And that's a credit to the staff and the administration that has supported them. Dr. Mazza and Dr. Weiner and both middle schools have really been supportive, helping us be creative in a lot of the activities that we're trying to do in our middle school PE curriculum. So they're in year one of their curriculum. The middle school and high school health department is now in year two, where we're in the design and implementation. They did a lot of work two years ago, and this year it was a lot more of just refining. We added a new health teacher over at Seven Bridges, and really helping make sure that there was alignment between the two buildings. And then vertically to the next level of the high school. And at the high school, we continue to develop new strategies and just making sure that we have new opportunities that are engaging for the students. This past fall, geocaching and disc golf were two of the popular offerings that we had at the high school, really. In terms of our professional development, this really happened when we shut down last March. We saw an immediate need for our staff to just support, to provide them with support. So we met a minimum of three times a week. We started off with every Monday, just identifying any concerns they had. Maybe it was a technology issue that they were concerned about, or a launching piece, or just making sure that, you know, what they were doing in one building was consistent with what the other building at that level was doing. So it was really an opportunity on Mondays for them to give me things they wanted me to look into. Every Wednesday was more of a department, a typical department meeting, where we just kind of provided updates that I was getting from administration, or any feedback I could offer them in terms of what to expect next. And then Thursday was really a planning day for us, and it was also a professional development day where, as we met on Wednesday, it was an opportunity to identify what are some needs that we needed. Credit to Dr. Peace and his professional development team countless times that we were, you know, leveraging them and their expertise in terms of jumping on with us and providing us with additional professional development, just to get them up to speed for what they needed to provide to students. So a lot of that work also lent itself to just the collaboration between our colleagues. And then as the season went on, it allowed us to develop this professional development plan that we've utilized this year with our department meetings every Wednesday. As the year went on, it allowed a lot of teachers to now start leading some of our workshops during our Wednesday team meetings. And we've quickly become one of the models of best practices for adapting during what we call the pandemic PE era, and, you know, learning what it means to teach phys ed without a gym, or without equipment, or when students are quarantined. And our teachers have done a tremendous job with this. Late in the school year last year, we led a multi-district forum where our district were leaders in two different levels. And it really gave us an opportunity to explain to everybody what we were doing, and other districts started to adapt a lot of our practices. And most recently, with our last superintendent's conference day, we had eight presenters represented in our department alone, which is a big accomplishment for us as a department. I was very proud of the staff for stepping up and taking part in that. Another thing that we had been, have been working on for the last couple of years, and it's a three-year plan, we're in year two of it right now, is our K-12 SEL curriculum. We started off by just developing this curriculum as we want to integrate SEL into our normal curriculum. And it started with, why don't you try a mindful moment, or try to, you know, speak the language, and how can we make this fit into physical education? In this summer that we developed our scope and sequence, we have an aligned K-12 curriculum that's a part of a daily lesson plan in every single one of our physical education classes and our health classes. And that continues to build. Our goal for next year, in the final phase of this, is to not just have it as a lone part of the lesson, but to integrate it throughout the entire lesson and make sure that those SEL components are interwoven into what the teachers are doing throughout. And the last piece, just before we got started, our department led a team of nurses and teachers throughout the district in putting together our pandemic education program that provided six through 12 lesson plans and a number of resources to really help support teachers and students in the reopening of our schools. Community engagement was the second piece of our focus. And we did a lot of things, whether it be through athletics or through physical education, starting last spring break with our family fun fitness. You probably saw my children running around our house, and then Dr. Mazza's kids running around his house. And it created a buzz that we realized that there was that void, and people were into it. You know, we had close to 10,000 hits on our Race for Community event that we did in the spring. The virtual field day that we did last May was a lot of fun. And then it turned into the Virtual Senior Experience, the Virtual Senior Awards Night that we had. And we've continued to build upon that. You know, this March, we're doing a commemorative one-year anniversary of when we shut down. We're doing our March Like a Spartan event to celebrate the resiliency of our community, you know, to really bring to light everything that we've been able to overcome. And we just posted something, I'm sure Christine will see it when she gets out of here.
It's totally embarrassing.
Her great Chappie Claw Challenge that she put on for this one-year anniversary. So a lot of fun, you know, and it's just one more thing that kind of allows us to celebrate everything that we've been challenged with and faced with, but more importantly, what we've been able to overcome. With the support of our sports boosters, we have added local live to allow some of our parents to see our events, and also added in some fun fans in the stands, things to help people feel like they're connected with our games. Return to interscholastic athletics, this was something that I think Christine and I started talking about, you know, last year when we were at the last basketball game of the year, and over the summertime, and, you know, how is this going to be possible? I think our focus has always been prioritized on safety, and then it kind of turned into establishing protocols. And I think one of the things that's allowed us to be successful is we are extremely consistent. I think the way that we operate and the way that we create our expectations and we maintain our procedures has been consistent from the day that we opened up. I think our communication to our parents, to our athletes, to our coaches has included, you know, not just us, but we are very clear with everybody that we compete against, everybody throughout the section. We're very in tune with what others are doing, and allowing them to either be successful or avoiding some of the struggles that they have. Testing our higher-risk athletes, we had about 170 students of our higher-risk sports that came through today. We've streamlined that and have been very successful in maintaining, you know, the success of that program. And then just phasing in our return to sports, you know, starting in the fall, going to the indoor, now allowing our higher-risk sports and our modified sports, which started two weeks ago, to now where we're allowing spectators to start returning. So in regards to our budget for this year, we've done so much work over the last four years in terms of improvements to our facilities, upgrading our equipment needs and everything else, that we're now at a point where we can start leveling off and really take away some of our initial plans from 2018, where we had to make some increases. So now that those things are in place, we can start going back to where we used to be. So you'll notice some reductions in some areas in terms of equipment, equipment repair, and also to athletic service. And those three areas of reduction all have to do with the work that we've done over the last three, four years in getting us to a stable point at this time. So we have a reduction this year in our overall budget. The other areas will be maintained. And that was all I have.
I have one question, and thank you for that. It was very, everybody, there's so much information, and it was all very helpful. My only question, and we may not know yet, but assuming that things get more and more towards normal, and our students can play athletics in the fall, something resembling normally, and maybe even have their parents to watch them. Does the supplies line in this budget account for any sort of testing materials, or are we just kind of taking a wait-and-see approach to what we would need for that?
Yeah, that's a good question. Testing supplies are free.
Okay. So we anticipate that they will continue to be free?
Yes. I could, I have purchased testing supplies for the prom, but for all the testing that we've done here, we receive them from the health department.
It's nice to have something free, right?
Jason, what's the, what's in contractual?
So contractual would be the pool, a purchase, anything that we would have a contract with. Those are contractual, the ice rink.
Because in 19, 2019, the actual was $4,600, and in 2020, we're anticipating that one six times. Now we're one-upped these times. Now it's back to having $20,000, so I guess add over $4,600 to $27,000.
So I believe that's when we started with the ice rink, but I, you know, I could go through and get that exact figure for you for that increase was, but I believe that's when we added ice hockey, the cost of ice hockey.
Because you know, you got that, you have 27, and then 20, that's good, but that goes up six times too. Now we're at 120, you know, it's just, it's a lot of clearance.
And we've had, we have added other contractual expenses as well. So, but I can go through, Warren, and I'll get that information for us.
Well, I guess it would be interesting to have the actual from the previous year, because it's all been insistent, except for that one number.
I just want to tell you how impressed I am at how you were able to just pivot the PE program remotely. I just have to say, I was really curious about how that would work initially, and you did such an amazing job. And I think it's so important, because I think everyone in this situation knows how difficult it is to be staying at home, sitting in front of the computer, and not moving the way we usually do. And I think that's a challenge for a lot of people, and certainly for kids. So I hope that we can all take a page out of all of this and apply it to our lives, because it's so important to have that part of our existence be recognized within the school system and how students, you know, take care of that part of their lives.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I mean, that credit really is to the staff, I mean, for their continual efforts in shifting their thinking and their normal, you know, way of their practices and their teaching strategies, and completely evolving with this time. So, you know, thank you very much, though.
I just want to add too, that I know, obviously, the high school's been more challenging in terms of attendance than we've been. It's been incredible with the elementary and middle schools. And being able to bring sports back, because we have such a large percentage of kids that do, that are involved in sports at the high school, was huge. And it was a huge coordinated effort, you know, the testing for the higher-risk sports, et cetera, but that you managed to bring back and maintain a season. I know how critical it was for these students who maybe weren't in school or had to stay at home or whatever, had, you know, to be a part of something at the high school. And I know it was a huge effort on your part, and Christine's, and Adam's, and their testing, and everybody was doing stuff, but I think it made a real difference to those high schools this year, and I know how hard everyone worked to make that happen. So I want to thank you. I know that was a very big task.
Thank you.
And to the boosters for adding local live, which helped the fact that they could not, you know, parents could not watch, it gave, gave them an opportunity to be present. So it was, it was a nice added bonus, definitely.
I think the other thing, Jason, is you talked about earlier, I'm trying to find the slide here, where, you know, everyone participates, right? Whether it's singing the national anthem, or being an athlete, or... I know I was there one day, and I was talking to Steve, the athletic trainer, and he said that with our new, new training center, we have students in there who are not part of the team, but they're there because they want to learn and become healthy and work out. And that's just, that's great, because it shouldn't just be for the teens, it should be for the entire district, or the entire student body. So thank you for allowing that, and encouraging that, you know, whenever our kids go, it's good for lifetime wellness.
So I guess I just want to just conclude by, you know, Ellen and Tony, John, Adam and I, we're at every meeting, and we always interact with the board around what we're doing in the district, but Karen, Jason, and Josh are not. So I do want to take this moment just to recognize the unique work that you've had to engage in with our staff, to be able to support our kids during the pandemic, and Karen coming in and supporting our students and our families who need special education services and 504 services is challenging in normal conditions, and to be able to maneuver that in the pandemic, brand new to our district, I really appreciate that. And your expertise and what you've brought to the department in helping us move forward. And Josh, the tremendous lift of live streaming all of our classes, so our remote kids are learning real time and leveraging Zoom in a way that keeps instruction moving from day one was incredible. And so we thank you for that. And then Jason, running athletics in the midst of the pandemic, and every time we got movement from the section to allow us to move forward, we did to the greatest extent possible for our kids, and then facilitating all of our testing weekly, and leading that for the district. I mean, that's not something that anyone could have ever anticipated, you would have done in your lifetime. So let me just take a moment on behalf of the entire district to thank you three of you, all the ones that have done so. So we really appreciate that. Ellen and Adam, thanks for quarterbacking the presentations tonight, too. So thank you. All right, that's the end of the superintendent's presentation. Thank you so much, everybody.
Is that a record?
That, well, no, but, no, but it's for now.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Okay, then. Ready to move to the next section? Okay, so committee reports. Who wants to start? Kelly?
I'll jump in, because Christine already mentioned what I was going to mention, but I want to add one thing, which is the Horst Reilly Scholarship Foundation's virtual gala is this Friday night. And we are, I'm the liaison to the scholarship fund, so I've got to get a preview of what the gala is going to be, and it's going to be very exciting. And it's also very much something that families can launch together. It is not going to be a very long evening. I think their estimate is somewhere between half an hour and 45 minutes. So it's certainly something, bring your kids, they're honoring Georgia, and they are honoring our custodial and maintenance staff, who've done such just an absolutely astonishing job this year at keeping our buildings clean and safe and open, and being such an important part of all of our schools, not only function, but, but community. So it'll be great if as many people as possible can tune into that on Friday night. And the other thing I wanted to add is that there is no charge to join. So there is, go to the website, click on the link, come join, and it's a phenomenal organization, and they're honoring some phenomenal people. That's it.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Policy committee met this week. We looked at two policies, but we've got a lot more work to do on, so we're not ready to bring it forward yet. Facilities, what Christine talked about, we talked about pavilions at the elementary schools. We talked about security techniques at the elementary schools, and also at the elementary schools, and I'll talk about that, according to Christine.
All right, so the board may recall, we're now at the phase of our security plan where we'd be outfitting the hallways at the elementary building, so we are going to move forward with that in our budgeting process. We've already done the middle schools and the, and the high school. And then our last meeting, we talked about potentially supporting pavilions outside at the three elementary schools, an instructional space. So the facilities committee agreed that it would be advantageous for us to explore that moving forward. So now I'm going to be introducing that idea to various partners to see if that's an initiative that they would consider supporting financially.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jay.
Right, we had a communications advisory committee meeting that had to get pushed next week. So we'll be recording that at next week's board meeting. That was going to take place next Tuesday instead of this afternoon. Also, the Chad Cross School Foundation met this week and they went through their traditional grants period in addition to their Instagrams. Just as a preview, there are, there are a couple of very good grants that were approved. It will probably, I'm hoping, be up for approval at our next meeting. So I'm sure Adam will be talking about that. So there's some good stuff coming down the pike. And it's been a challenging year to coordinate that kind of traditional grant. It's a lot of research and discussion, et cetera. So smaller number this year, but all good things to benefit our, our school community. And they have a benefit coming up again, more on that later on, at the end of April. So again, a virtual benefit, an event that will involve a mentalist, which is always fun. But I think that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Jay. And Holly and I are on the community advisory committee for anti-racism, equity, and social justice. And CARES committee. So Holly, do you want to give the update for that?
Yes, so the CARES committee met last week on Monday, that was the eighth. We were primarily processing the recommendations that have been made by the CRE Educational Work Stream and as well as some results that came from the PTA about diversity and, and belonging in the district. So really, what we did is we took the recommendations and some ideas that we had, put them into three big buckets that were focused on, which is having a shared understanding, having the right professional learning, and creating an equitable culture for BIPOC students. So there are about ten actions that are going to be undertaken between now and the next meeting in May. And also, the, the process with the RFP to have a response for, for that is kind of the, the big, long-term picture. But you, there'll be more to update in, it's May, right? I didn't find the date, so that's why I was just checking.
Yeah, May, because we have the April, spring break. And, and so we'll be doing this, the work, I mean, Christine, we could talk about that. I feel like, but the, the work will be getting done in this two-month period. And we'll come back together in May to, you know, regroup and get feedback and, and bring an update to the community. And I just want to again thank the CRE Education Committee. We want to thank the PTA. And I want to thank all of the members of our own community advisory committee. There are a lot of committees, but we're all, you know, working in tandem and working together. And it's not a bad thing to have so many committees, because we have a big, big community with a lot of stakeholders and different people who participate at different levels, at the school district level or maybe at the town level. So I just want to share my appreciation for all of the incredible work that's been done throughout. And we'll hopefully all continue to work together toward the same goals.
Tony, did you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to do that again. I wanted to share that one of the recommendations that came from the CARES committee last time we met was possibly having our students share some of the work that's happening in schools as it relates to centering equity and addressing social justice. And so two of our students who are on the committee, Aiden and Ayala, are going to be collaborating on a video that we hope to be part of the next Chad Cross update, committee update.
That's great. Would we have, be able to show that video at a board meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, definitely.
That would be great. I was just going to add, we'd be meeting in late May, because we have a lot of work we need to do before we meet again. But we met with our admin team today to kind of parcel out our tasks. So we'll be in a good, we'll be in a good place to do that comprehensive update to the CARES committee in May. And we'll embed it in our work that we share with the full board and do a monthly update the committee on our strategic plan. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, so we'll move on to public comment period. We welcome public comments. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And just to say that the public comment period is a comment period. It's not, it's not meant to be a Q and A, but board members may have a discussion regarding the comments at the end. So if anyone is interested in making a comment, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Jackie McCarthy, and I'm happy to say that this is the last time I'll be speaking before you. Happy because my son will finally be graduating high school and because it's been a very long journey. The journey has definitely had its ups and downs. The ups have been watching Brady grow and flourish and exceed people's expectations, to see him act on stage, wrestle on the mat, learn algebraic equations, discuss literature, write essays, debate in class, and go to prom. But this wasn't a journey for the faint of heart. I myself put in countless hours collaborating with teachers and even helping modify the work at times, as well as strengthening and strategizing with my excellent parent trainer, Colleen O'Sullivan, on how to ensure that he got the most out of every class. And Brady had the daunting task at times of having to win over at least a few teachers with each new year to prove that being in their class could work. The hardest part of the journey were the times when he had to deal with teachers and administrators who saw the disability, his disability over his abilities, such as one of his middle school teams who wanted to prevent him from being placed on track for a diploma, or the high school ADP and administration who chose to single only him out to his four running his regions, regions tests. An unprecedented, unprecedented move according to the regions board rules, because this ADP, just weeks into his job at the time, decided to tell, decided that he felt Brady's essay didn't deserve any credit. But despite these challenges, Brady prevailed. Thanks to Dr. McCarthy's belief in inclusion, she supported our decision to put Brady back onto a diploma track. And because of the pandemic, Brady ended up receiving credit for the regions tests that the Greeley administration tried to disparage him on. Though there were obstacles, there were many high points. Wes Orchard under Mr. Scoob, when Brady first experienced what true inclusion could look like. Elizabeth Freed, Brady's TA, who has been a true partner to Brady and his success. Mrs. Miller, who believed he could pass the algebra regions when the other amount of teachers didn't. And Brady proved her right by passing with a seventy-five. Mike the Ballast, who should be your role model for inclusion both in sports and in the classroom. Mr. Simo, who is a believer in unified sports. Teachers too many to list who have worked tirelessly to modify Brady's work and found creative ways to keep him engaged in class. And so many classmates and peers, all his friends who gave him the drive by eighteen birthday parade last year. And the Greeley Lunch Buddy friend group, who throughout the pandemic has been hosting Zoom lunches on Sundays to keep our kids connected. In my final words to the board, I want to say, inclusion means more than putting kids in self-contained classrooms like halfway's and letting them mingle during lunch and specials. It means doing the hard work to find ways to truly include them in the general classroom. It may not be an easy task. And frankly, I feel like it's made harder than it needs to be, but it can be done. Brady and his teachers have shown this. Not only has he graduated with a diploma, but he received all his class credits in only one extra year. Thankfully, we did not have to end up justifying Brady's hard work to the superintendent to get him a diploma. He has earned a diploma all on his own, through hard work and determination and a little luck from the pandemic, all while leaving a positive impact on the students and teachers who traveled with him on this journey. And now I'm proud to present my graduating student, Brady McCarthy. Thank you!
Hello, everybody! I'm back! So, I have a feast just for all of you guys. So, I am the Brady McCarthy, I am not eighteen, wicked, I am the bug in the asshole! So, this is my final school year, so. I have an option. So, listen, I'm pretty good. So, so, you know, way back, I'm the famous puzzle, I, of me. So, you know, that's mine. I just finished my very career, did you buy the Dallas A. Post? I'd say, next, I am very good at math, always. And, and I am a new player for tear, and if I'm not again. And I am a very difficult player. And I am a bound, the holy, this year, two thousand and twenty-one. And also, I'd say, I am graduating near forty-fourth year, mother's heart. So, I'm glad, don't worry about it, the book is here, I am so happy for my future. Then you have a great afternoon, and I, I'm so very busy saying, this, this is it. This is the A. Game for my life. This is my school, all right? Thank you, be safe. Good luck, and I'm sitting tight, tonight, I'm glad I'm going to get you. And I hope they hear you always. And then you have a great afternoon, and I have, and I have a happy, safe, happy day, guys. And thank you very much, bye! Yeah!
Congratulations, Brady! If anyone wants to follow that, you are welcome, come to the microphone. No, no. Congratulations, Brady.
Congratulations.
And Jackie, you know, we, we see you every year. We have followed this for so many years. And it really brings tears of joy to my eyes to see Brady and to hear him. Talk about his accomplishments, we're very proud, I'm sure you're very proud too.
But Jackie, it doesn't mean you can't come to a board meeting and talk to us.
You can still come back, Jackie. And Brady, you can come back, most definitely.
Vicky, cannot add something?
Absolutely.
Jackie, I still remember the first time you came here, when you moved here. And I'm really moved, I'm so happy for Brady. Thank you.
Looking forward to graduation day. All right, so last call, any other, any other public comments? Nope, okay, seeing that they are none, we will continue on with the agenda. Okay, so approvals and notifications. Let's see, I will take a motion for items three point one and three point two to accept the minutes of the March third and the March seventh board meetings. I will move, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
On item three point three, may I have a motion to adopt the revised district safety plan? Second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Christine, do you want to highlight the revisions?
I took a look at it.
I took a look at it and it's, of course, it's as comprehensive as ever. And I had a bit of a hard time identifying what was.
Just there's, yeah, there, there, thank you, Vicky.
It's just how we responded to the pandemic. That's really what it's about.
Right.
Just how I go, yeah, Christine, what did you say?
It's how we responded to the pandemic.
Oh, yes, so it's written out in the plan. Right, so some of those changes were there already, I just was gathering what was added to it. But it's very comprehensive and well done, so thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented. I will move item four point one instructional as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend four point two non-instructional as presented. May I have a motion on that?
I would definitely accept four point two non-instructional as presented.
I have a second, any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have our consent agenda. Is, would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove five point one zero. Just because it's a proposition. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to discuss it separately.
We can discuss any item within the consent agenda. But this is a question about removing an item and voting on it separately. So we can keep it in and have a full discussion, or we can have a separate vote. And, and it's fine to do either one, I just want to clarify what removing the item means.
That was my proposition, to me, it just seems like it warranted being voted on separately.
You want a separate vote, okay, I just want to clarify what, what the goal is, that's fine, that's fine. Anything else that anyone would like to remove from the agenda? No? All right, so the consent agenda minus item five point one oh. Um, hold on a second, okay. I, I just have to take a step back for a minute. Because if we're approving item five point one one, before we approve item five point one oh, we would be approving the contents of item five point one oh, isn't that right?
I think you would remove five point one one, act on five point one through five point.
Well, we would act on the whole consent agenda except for five point one oh and five point one one. Okay, we would have to remove five point one one as well, isn't that right, Lisa?
Yes, because five point one one is predicated on your.
On five point one oh, that's right, okay. All right, so now may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, which would comprise items five point one through items five point one three, with the exception of five point one zero and five point one one, which will be, which are removed from the consent agenda.
I'll move the remaining items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, and the remaining items are, just to be transparent about our consent agenda, are a number of education services. We have the bidding board recommendations for education services. We have the, the resolution to purchase the desk shields. And the resolution is to acknowledge that because we are in a health emergency that we don't have to do the bidding, go through the bidding process. And, right, so that was the last item. Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to item five point one zero. This is a resolution approving a proposition that will be on the ballot at the annual meeting. And this is a proposition to install a new boiler at the Horst Greeley High School auditorium, I'm sorry, at the Horst Greeley High School gymnasium, which includes mechanical, electrical, and general trade work and incidental expenses at a maximum cost of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And up to, and with that amount, up to that amount, to be transferred from the Building and Facilities Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to the capital fund to pay for the costs of the project. And no budget increase is called for in the proposition. We're just simply using money from the capital reserve fund, which is something that has to be voted on by the public. So may I have a motion on item five point zero?
I move five point one zero.
Did I say that, five point one zero? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So any, any other discussion on this proposition?
I just wanted to mention that we had discussed this at the last meeting. This was recommended by the facilities committee. So I'm obviously in support of it.
So all in favor of item five point one zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, may I have a motion on item five point one one? This is authorization given to the district clerk to give notice of the annual public hearing on the budget and school district election and library election vote, which would include the proposition.
I'll move five point one one.
May I have a second? Who are we seconded?
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of item five point one one, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything on facilities? Anything further? Yeah, okay. And the financials? So may I have a motion to take all the financials together, items five. together, items five, I'm sorry, items seven point one through seven point four, to acknowledge receipt of the claims auditor report, the treasurer's report, the appropriation status report, and the revenue status report, all for February twenty twenty-one.
I move that we acknowledge receipt of the financials.
I will second, are there any questions or comments on any of the financials, any of the reports? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings, our next meeting will be Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, at seven thirty at the Horace Greeley Auditorium, we'll have budget presentations on operations and maintenance, non-instructional items, revenue, tax rates, and contingency, and following will be a meeting on April fourteenth, at seven thirty PM at Horace Greeley Auditorium, and that will be for the budget adoption. So, all in favor of adjourning, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I will move to adjourn the meeting, may I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning at, does anyone have the exact?
Ten nineteen.
Ten nineteen, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.